All right, guys. Hey, welcome to the Mental Health Town Hall. Being hosted today by Platoon 22. I am the president and co-founder of Platoon 22. And today we're pumped because we get to be joined by some of the who's who when it comes to mental health and how to deal with really what has been a trying time for everybody. There's nobody on planet Earth that has not been affected by the COVID pandemic. And what we want to make sure that we're able to do is, is to give you guys some resources, let you understand that there are places that you can go for help and also even more importantly, that asking for help is okay. I'm proof of that. I went from being suicidal, actually attempting, spending three days locked up in the psych ward here at Frederick Memorial Hospital, to turn around and build on one of the fastest companies in America, best growing companies in America, Sultrefit, helping to co-fund this nonprofit. We're currently in, raised 1.1 million dollars for building a veteran center right here in Frederick, Maryland that will service the entire region. And our whole purpose there is to make sure that we can link the veteran that needs the resources with the people that can provide the resources. Now, I want to set stage for today. It's going to be very, very easy for you to go follow along with. If you have any questions, please look down to your chat side. All you need to do is click that drop down arrow and you can either direct it to all panelists, if you want to do that, please click all panelists, or if you have the question directly to one panelist, please go ahead and post it there as well, too. Now, without further ado, I want to make sure that we let you guys get prepped and introduce you to the superstars we have with us. First up today is going to be Melissa Barber. She's the program manager we're serving together.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. And thank you, Platoon 22, for inviting us to be on this panel. I'm really excited to be here. I will tell you a little bit about myself. I am Melissa Barber. Like Danny said, I work for Serving Together. I have worked with veterans in Frederick County for close to 10 years and I'm new to Serving Together. So I would like to talk with you a little bit about what I'm doing with Serving Together right now, a little bit about Serving Together. It is a program under a larger organization, nonprofit called Every Mind out of Montgomery County. They have been around for 60 years and Serving Together has now been around for 10 years. They decided through some hotline calls that there was a need for some coordinated care for veterans, calls that were coming in, and that's how Serving Together got started. Two years ago, we collaborated with an organization called Institute for Veterans and Military Families. With this partnership, we were able to adopt the America Serves Unite Us platform, which offered us a software where we can coordinate referrals in and out of different organizations through this software, and it's called Unite Us. We have a team of four. We have three, three, sorry, five. We have three program managers, one peer navigator, and a director. We have, we are one of 17 coordination centers nationwide, and we are the center hub for the national capital area. We have, we cover seven counties in Virginia, Washington DC, Southern Maryland, to include Calvert, Charles, and St. Mary's, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, and Frederick County. We're excited about the software. I think that's the important P we can maybe bring to the table, and that's the ability to refer back and forth to different organizations electronically. We do pull the client more out of that process by not just handing over numbers to someone and expecting them to follow up, and all of that stuff can be really confusing for people, especially when they're dealing with a variety of different issues at that time. So our coordination center takes on the lead in doing a very thorough intake. And with that intake, we can match them to our network providers. We have pre-registered for all of their information, all of their documents that they need, and we really just want to make that process more streamlined and easier for the client and for providers to services. So, thank you so much for having me here. Hopefully, I can provide some information throughout this panel.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up, we have Jay Hustler, Behavioral Health Authority Veterans Advisory Council.
Good evening. So yeah, I'm Jay Hustler. I am the Assistant Director of Behavioral Health Services for the Frederick County Health Department. The Health Department acts as the local behavioral health authority for Frederick County. That means lots of things, but just in a simple definition, the Health Department and the local behavioral health authority are trying to ensure our entire system of care. So looking for gaps between services, trying to fill those gaps, trying to support the system of care that's already in place, helping people navigate that system. So when somebody's looking for mental health services or substance use services, making sure that they're connected with the appropriate treatment provider that can meet their needs. And like I said, when there are gaps in that system of care, the Health Department tries to fill those. So thing, providing direct services like syringe services, overdose response training, kind of a whole host of things. There's a whole system of peer recovery services where people with lived experience are, are helping those who are currently going through whatever behavioral health concern they're, they're dealing with. So yeah, it's, it's a pretty broad spectrum of services that we, we provide and, and try to support the community and the people in it. So how that would impact veterans would be pretty much any of those services because veterans are, are people too and need some of those services at different times. So that's kind of where, where I'm coming from.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up, we have Carrie Kiefer. She's the Veterans Benefit Specialist, Maryland Department of Veteran Affairs.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Danny, and thank you, Platoon 22, for having this panel and for inviting me to be here. As Danny said, I'm a veteran benefit specialist. I work for the state of Maryland, which is the state agency, much like many other veteran service organizations. We assist veterans in accessing their federal benefits, disability compensation, connecting to the healthcare, answering any questions they may have. During COVID, we're doing a lot of that, just like this platform or over the phone. Not so much in person at the, at the moment, but hopefully that'll resume here shortly. We do have 14 locations, 14, maybe 15 statewide, and some of those are starting to open up as well. So, so hopefully we'll, we'll get some more in-person appointments coming up. But you know, I'm always here and happy to help connect veterans, especially trying to get compensation or getting connected into the VA, which is a little bit difficult right now.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up, sheen Corsa, I hope I pronounced that correctly. He's the CEO and he's the Network for Care. Thank you for being on.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me, Danny. And it's very interesting to hear the other panelists, and I wish I knew about Melissa's project a while ago, and I'm sure we can connect afterwards. We've been around for about 20 years. Our primary focus is to integrate resources and information on behalf of a particular target population. We're active in about 500 or so counties around the country in 25 estates. And I believe back in 2007, the State Department of Mental Health and the State Department of Veteran Affairs in Maryland County came to us and they asked if we could build a network of care for veterans. Prior to that, we had network of care for behavioral health statewide in your state and other estates around the country. So we worked at the time with Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown, who was a veteran himself, and others, Bob Sharp and a few others in the state, helped us develop the very, very first veteran site in partnership with the state of California. Once we launched that in Maryland, we also, it then grew across the country. Many estates now have it. Thanks to you guys. What you can find on a network of care is all the resources in your local areas such as addiction, substance abuse, aging and disability, community resources, criminal justice, legal services, crisis and emergency services, education, employment, financial assistance, housing, mental health, youth and family, and others. And we highlight particularly certain areas that during about a year of research, more than 12 years ago, became paramount as the most useful sets of local, national, and state resources, which is crisis intervention, healthcare, housing, military services, employment, and veteran services. Now, we don't really care about how these services are funded and who is really providing them. Our primary objective is to identify and validate the resources, but make sure it's comprehensive in every community that we are in. You can find your site by going to www.networkofcare.org, select the product veterans, and select your county. Select, select a product, select the state, select the county, and that's how you get to your site. We also have series of tools for the providers in the community, a referral application, a database manager that we make available to anyone, wherever there is a network of care. If you want to have a referral application, you can have that. And if you scroll to the bottom of the page, on any page, there is also a widget for our service directory, which is basically just one line of code. You can copy and paste into any site and integrate that directory into your site. So there are a number of different access points to the database. Providers can use it to make referral. Other organizations can use it to provide access, have a service directory on their site, and we respond to all online inquiries within 24 business hours. Thanks again. And if you guys have any question, I'm sure we'll get some time to answer them for you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Travis Walter. He's the program manager for Mental Health Association of Frederick County.
Hi, everyone. So I'm specifically the manager for the Behavioral Health Walk-In Service. So we are a crisis service located here in Frederick. We primarily serve Frederick County, but we do get people who walk in from up in Washington County, up in Gettysburg, down in Jefferson County in West Virginia. Pretty much if you show up, we're going to serve you. Really what we do is help people who are in crisis, whether that's a mental health crisis, a family relation crisis, or just need someone to talk to. We, we help you, one, to give you somebody to talk to, but two, help find the resources to fit your need, whether that's mental health counseling ongoing, substance abuse counseling, whether it's connecting with one of these other panelists as far as veterans type benefits. We will just help give you all of that information to connect you where you need to go. We do also help people with their housing applications and things like that if they're struggling with that. We have seen a lot of veterans here. We've also seen a lot of active duty military coming in from Dietrich or people that are living here but working down the road. And so I just want to let you know that we have two ways to access us right now, which are over in the chat function as well. One, you can go to our website and it can be a totally virtual visit. You just do the intake on there and then somebody is with you typically within just a minute or two through something similar to Zoom. Or starting today, we are reopening our building for the walk-in program specifically so that people can have that face-to-face interaction again. We're here at 226 South Jefferson Street from 10 to 10 on Monday through Friday, and then 10 to 6 on the weekends. We're free, we're confidential, and we're just here to help. We want to help you. We want to help your families. So please, by all means, come in anytime that you need us.
Awesome. Now, guys, I wanted to jump into the question and answer part. Jay, we're going to have to depend on you to just scream out when you're ready to talk because we can't see your, your handsome face. For everybody that joined in late, we've all universally agreed that Jay is a handsome guy, even though none of you can see him. You have to take our word on it. But for everyone else, just to try to limit confusion, when I pose the question, really the questions I'm going to be asking, they're open for everybody. Just throw your hand up if you have an answer, and then I'll call on you. Fair enough. One of the questions that I, that I have for you guys is I recently, well, I guess not recently at this point in time, I went down to Atlanta for the Warrior Symposium, and they echoed something at one of their seminars that I've experienced personally in Platoon 22, and that is the difficulty in getting the veteran to come out and self-identify that they need services, whether that is a stigma because they're afraid of, or think they shouldn't ask for help, or if they're worried, you know, whatever conspiracy theory or rumor is out there that if they come and get help, it's going to cause them X, Y, and Z. So I'm curious for you, A, how do you typically get your veterans? And B, what can people do to help a veteran in their life go out to seek those services? Travis?
I'll start. So I think the way that we normally get veterans to come in, it's been somebody else who has been here, or occasionally people who've been brought here by a loved one or by a former sergeant. So they end up coming here and then it's word of mouth. It's really letting people know that there are safe spaces, there are places you can go, that they are positive experiences, and that they really can help.
We'll go Carrie first.
So and for us, it's, it's very similar. It's a lot of word of mouth. Other veterans who have come in, and maybe to kind of breaking the stigma of the VA. When people come into our office, we're not the VA. We're the Maryland Department of Veteran Affairs. It's confusing sometimes, but being the state agency, we're an advocate. So we're there helping veterans. And if I'm having a conversation with somebody and finding that they're having a lot of issues, it's the same as another resource sending them to me. I'm going to do the exact same. I'm going to send them out to another resource. Melissa and I work together often, and there's a lot of other community partners that I, you know, that I work with that I'm referring people to as well, to make sure that they're getting every service that we have available here in this awesome community.
Melissa?
I think it helps to have a good partnership within the community too with all of the other organizations that are meeting with veterans and in their, there, within their programs. And if you are working, have a good relationship with these organizations and they can trust that the services they're offering are going to be thorough and come from a genuine place, then normally it helps to sort of transition those, those clients back and forth from one another, sort of like what you said, I think, doing, you know, working together in the community, it helps to be able to talk to someone who's calling and say, I, you know, rather than just say, I'm going to refer you to Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs Frederick Office, you can say, I know Carrie, we've, you know, worked on other, with other veterans together before, and she's amazing, and you're going to really, you know, she's going to do everything she can to help you. Sort of helps build that trust a little bit more. So I think having good partnerships and networking is really helpful. And then also on the peer navigator portion of it, just honestly, I think having a really good intake person that can express that they're listening and that they genuinely care. And so I think that's just really having the right team also. And, you know, on that first, that first interaction is really important. When, when a veteran is reaching out, you have to really, you know, you can't, you have to be genuine and you have to be authentic. And I think if you can, you know, present that to someone when they're calling, they're more likely to open up and share things that are going on within them.
All right. The other question, you know, when I came, I saw, for a full disclosure, I go and talk to somebody. And one of the things that my counselor said to me, when this first popped off, is she'd go, you know, looking around, she's like, I really expected my caseload to go up. I really expected with all this happening to just be flooded. And she said on the front end, veterans were actually responding better than the civilian counterparts, because for lack of better terms, it was chaos, right? And we're used to being a little bit chaotic. And I personally refuse to use the term new normal, but as it starts to settle out a little bit, so to speak, and we are starting to re, go back into that reopening phase, I'm curious from each of you, what are you seeing that how the, how this epidemic has, pandemic has affected the veteran and how is the veteran reacting to it?
So for me, I found that it was just a little bit busier in that we all have more time to deal with claims and to take the time to get that paperwork going. So that, that's been helpful, just having a little bit more downtime. Not necessarily that I've seen more veterans kind of struggling other than, you know, that, that financial piece that we kind of all in the back of our minds, like, you know, what, what's happening? And then where are things going to go? Making sure their money's coming in, the VA is good, they're still making payments. So that's a good thing. But, but otherwise, it's just been pretty much steady, the same for me. And like I said, on, on the benefit side, it's just we all have more time now.
Danny, you're mute. Your mic is off.
How did I mute myself? I don't even know. All right. So are you up, sir?
Yeah, I think that we see about across the country, about somewhere between 10% to 20% increase in accessing our service directories and finding resources. In the areas where we have actually been able to connect the veteran navigators or referral organizations to our environment in order to provide a reverse 211, we also see that those reverse 211 inquiries increase between eight to 12%. One of the things we did very, very early on, I think in March, we launched it in your site and across the country, was the listing of all telehealth behavioral health resource providers with the shelter in place and with the new regulation that they could actually get billing for it. It made sense, and we have begun to actually email all providers to see if they can self-identify at telehealth post-COVID. We don't know exactly whether the increase is because of the COVID-19 or is because of unemployment or what. And sometimes we just get seasonal increases. So, but that's what we see across the country.
Melissa?
I think we did see a little bit of a change in why people were calling. One of the things that came up that is somewhat unusual is food security. It's not unusual given the circumstances, but considering our, our history of calls, we had a few more for food security, and a lot of it was driven behind income support. I think people, you know, were out of war a little while, and probably some of them still are. So although they weren't getting shut-off notices or anything like that, they were, you know, seeing some of these bills pile up and to get some help before it became a real issue. So we saw a little bit of change in terms of why people were calling. And then we did start a COVID screening for our, all of our calls to sort of determine whether what they were calling about was due to their experience with COVID and that what that impact was having on them. And a little over 50% actually did say that their, their needs were related to COVID. So I mean, I, I think that's pretty significant. And it was a lot of needing, you know, financial assistance. And given the circumstances, you can imagine, you know, why that would be. But I did also get, and this is an interesting twist, but some of the, the prisoners have been released early. And I noticed personally a few additional calls for people who were being released from jails that didn't have any plans in place. And I had several that called directly that I spoke with that were being released and had no connection to mental health services. They had no job. They didn't have a stable housing situation. And I think that probably is a little bit due to, because I think they did release people relatively quickly and early, sort of limit the impact it had on inmates. So I, that was one interesting thing that I noted personally through some of the calls that we had.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to pose this question. Anyone on the panelists can and answer it. It's going to lead to my secondary question. It's going to end up going to Carrie, though. We talked about, you mentioned earlier, machine, you talked about substance abuse, and we talked about, you know, whether it be alcohol, whether it be drugs. Who here wants to weigh in on the correlation between those things and the veteran that is suffering from PTS? I know a lot of times people feel that they had, they're ashamed of it, and we'd not want to say that it's necessarily justification, but we want to understand why it happens. Travis?
Yes, just yes. I, I think that there's absolute correlation, both from my personal experiences in the past, myself and then other service member brothers and sisters. Yes. Here at Walk-In, I think that the majority of our veterans that do come in that are suffering, whether they've been officially diagnosed with PTSD or not, but that are suffering from things that were going to lead us on that path, are probably self-medicating with alcohol a lot. And really, the reason that they're coming in isn't the PTSD portion of it as much as the alcohol has started to affect their family life or something else. It's causing these other issues that they've come to get help for. You know, I have an anger issue. I have this issue, you know, and I don't want my relationship to, to suffer, so I'm trying to get help. And then as we start drilling down, we realize that's really what the root cause is, is it's this PTSD that's unresolved and that we're, that people are trying to do the best they can with, but just not necessarily doing what's truly going to help in the long run.
I want to shoot back right before we jump over to Carrie, though, if you feel comfortable elaborating on this. When those, when we have a veteran that is in that position where they are self-medicating, do you know what the general first course of action is? Do they tend to see the veteran get help for the substance abuse first and then address the PTS? Or do you see them trying to address the PTS in ultimate hopes that it will curb the substance abuse issue?
So here at Walk-In, we would really have the conversation with the veteran, what is it that you're willing and able to work on first? If they want to work on both of those, we're going to give them the resources. We're going to try to find them a specific resource that will work with them on both issues at the same time. But if they, if they're saying, I'm not, you know, I don't think I'm ready to give up drinking yet. Okay, so let's work on these other things. Other people say, I don't want to work on the mental health stuff, you know, because there, there's a lot of stigma on that, but maybe I should be drinking less. And so we say, okay, let's start there. And we're going to give them all the resources for that, whether that's starting at the Health Department with peer recovery specialists for the substance piece, or linking them to some sort of outpatient service. But ultimately, it, it's up to them. We're not going to push. We're going to offer all of the options and help navigate them with what they're able and willing to do.
Awesome. Now, whenever it seems that a veteran, my experience personally, and my experience being in the nonprofit sector with Platoon 22, there always seems to be that one trigger that finally convinces the veteran to seek help. Okay? And for some people, I have no doubt that COVID would have been that trigger. But the question I want to bring up to you, Carrie, is that, and this question popped up in my head through this, just the duration of this conversation, so I don't have my actual numbers in front of me, but I do know that there are, there are a significant amount of veterans or a significant number of cases where that veteran may have been, other than honorable discharge, right? And it could have been PTS related. It could have been, you know, maybe they got in some fights or they became, you know, didn't get along with the chain of command, however you want to look at it. And so many of those veterans, their terms bad paper, they think they have bad paper and they have no access, A, to resources with bad paper, or B, the ability to challenge that actual rating. So I was wondering if you would take it a few minutes to speak to either of those?
Sure, absolutely. So if the discharge is in fact related to mental health PTSD that was undiagnosed at the time, or the, if there is evidence, whether that's buddy statements, the veteran's own testament, that is absolutely something that the VA will consider. Anytime that someone has a bad conduct discharge and they file for benefits, the VA then will take their, what they're filing, they'll take all of their information, their personnel records, and they make an administrative decision on whether there will allow them to have benefits or not. When it's something in regards to that, when it's, you know, it's related to why they were discharged, they're, they're definitely going to look at the whole picture. And it's absolutely important to get that information over to the VA. This is something that I've been doing more frequently, and it's a change that the VA thankfully had made several years ago, since I've been doing this, so about four years. It's slowly getting more and more that they're doing these and that, you know, if someone has a bad conduct discharge or another than honorable, that's not automatically, you know, there's absolutely no resources and the doors are all shut. That's never the case.
Awesome. Jay, I'm going to jump over to you real quick for the next one.
Before you ask your next question, could I, could I address the alcohol question that you posed earlier?
Yes, sir, please do.
I just wanted to throw out a couple of statistics that I think are really important to think about. So in Frederick County, on the first day of the shelter stay-at-home order, alcohol sales in Frederick County spiked 59% on the first day of the stay-at-home order. On the same, comparing the same week of, of the first day, first week of stay-at-home this year versus last year, distributors reported that alcohol sales tripled compared to their normal. So I think it's really important, and you know, that's not anything specific to, to veterans, but I think it's very important to veterans, but I think it's very important to acknowledge, there's a hell of a lot more alcohol consumption going on in Frederick County right now than usual. And I think we all know that that, that consumption is going to exacerbate pre-existing conditions that are going on for that, for each person and for those families. Let's not also forget the kids that are in these houses and sometimes in not-too-healthy situations. So yeah, I think alcohol has, has had a tremendous impact on, on everyone's ability to cope with, with the current circumstances. Sorry for interrupting you, I just wanted to make sure I threw that out there.
That, that was a perfect segue into the next couple of questions that we have and, you know, I'll start with you. I, I'll put two questions together for you and answer them as you will. And then if anybody, of course, on the panel wants to chime in, we'd love your two cents, that's why we have you here. What can you tell us about a person's natural reaction to stress? And can you go in and talk a little bit about how the, the brain science that's related to that stress and anxiety that is obviously causing a fifty-nine percent spike in alcohol purchases?
Wow, so that's a big question, right? We're talking about brain science and, and, and one of the things I get to do in my job is go out and talk to folks in the community and provide education about toxic stress and adverse childhood experiences and how that literally changes the structure of your brain and therefore changes our behavior, our decision-making, all those sorts of things. So I think that might be a little bit too much to, to comment on directly right now, but what I will say is this, you know, what it does is, what stress does is put us into a heightened state of arousal where we are, we are, you know, constantly hyper vigilant and have kind of our heads on a swivel all the time, for lack of a better term. And yeah, so we have a tendency to, to, to react and overreact to stimulus that wouldn't necessarily generate that response usually. And of course, add that level of stress on to, you know, again, whatever pre-existing situation it is, whether it's trouble at home with, with family members, whether it's mental health, whether it's substance use, that added stress is going to add to that mix and have things bubble to the surface that weren't really there necessarily before bubbling at the surface. So what we see is mental health conditions can emerge during, during this crisis more so than usual because of that stress, or it can exacerbate pre-existing conditions. I think those are the biggest things to look at.
Awesome. And, and I hate to be the guy that ever looks to the, I'm an eternal optimist nowadays. I hate to be the guy that looks forward and sees anything through a pessimistic lens, but I also try to be realistic. And as we start to get ready to come out of the COVID lockdown, and when that happens, we're gonna see the executive actions from the governor that kept people from being able to be evicted, to have their homes repossessed, we're gonna start to see those go away. And my biggest fear personally of all of this has been those people and individuals that were living paycheck to paycheck that now didn't have a paycheck for one, two, three months. They obviously weren't able to pay the, that first month's rent. They surely are not gonna be able to pay three or four months' rent all at one time. So where do you see this? And this is really open to anyone on the panelists. We're gonna have loneliness, we're gonna have isolation, we're gonna have a very real chance of people losing their jobs, businesses, homes. What do you guys see when you look forward? Do you see a surge in demand for your services? And if so, do you feel that you're equipped to handle that surge? Now, Melissa?
I absolutely think that we're gonna get a surge in calls because I do think, and I've been honest from the beginning, that a lot of these forgiveness programs are for now, but they are gonna eventually go away. And I'm wondering, you know, all of these, I don't think they're gonna forgive everybody of all of their debt, it's just gonna pile up. So I do think that we're gonna get a lot more calls once all of these programs are taken away. And I think, I feel pretty well-prepared, at least in terms of what's available, only because, you know, the housing programs are there, the, the programs are out there, it's just a matter of being able to get people steered in the right direction. I don't know where all the money is gonna come from for people to go and pay all of any, if there's any back bills that they're gonna have to pay, but I, I do think in terms of being creative, hopefully that, you know, we'll have to continue to be creative. And I have seen programs expand services and maybe we're just gonna have to continue to expand all of our services until we're able to meet the needs. But I, I'm concerned about where everyone's gonna get all this money to pay their back bills for sure.
And to add on to that, for anybody that watches, listens, hears this, this is not the, in my humble opinion, this is not the time to be reactive. This is not the time to say that I'm going to start this process once the process is needed. I, I think the reality is, is that you know now whether or not you need to start looking for resources to help you. And honestly, you know, not to put a dim light on things, if you haven't started yet, you're probably already behind the power curve. So I'm definitely gonna recommend that you have resources right here, make sure you reach out to these individuals. How about you, Carrie? How does, do you feel that the Maryland Department of Veteran Affairs is ready to answer the following rings?
Oh, absolutely. I think we're, we're definitely equipped to be able to help people. We also offer the Maryland Trust Fund, which is a program that has financial support for veterans, for emergent situations. So just that, if they're behind on rent, utilities, once the shut-off is listed, we have those funds available. It's just a matter of getting people connected to us. And we're, we're always here, we're a phone call away, an email away, you know, however they can get in touch with us.
The next question I would have for you guys is, listen, we're talking about, you know, I like to transition, like to transition from the, the negative or, or bad side, not listen, let's, let's put, let's shine a little light on it. And with that being said, you know, what are some strategy, some strategies that you guys could rec, offer up that people can manage the long-term stress of COVID? The reality is, is that this isn't a track meet, it isn't a sprint, this is, this is going to be a marathon. You're not gonna fix it or solve any problems like this. So what do you guys have to offer up as tips for them to be able to manage this while still accomplishing what they need to get done?
Can I weigh in real quick?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I can't raise my hand.
I can see you transitioned off, so.
I, I always love to come at things from a strength perspective, right? So, you know, I think one of the things that we could do, especially with veterans, is, is help point out, you know, what are the strengths that they have gained as a result of their service? And how can they apply those strengths to the current situation? You know, you wanna talk about resiliency, good grief, you know, veterans are some of the most resilient folks, some of the most skilled folks, some of the strongest folks that y'all ever encounter. And I think it's a, a matter of kind of redirecting their, their focus on that and, and allowing them to use those strengths to benefit them in getting through this crisis. One other thing I'll throw in there real quick is making sure that we're all talking to people, the general public. One of the things I love about my job is getting a chance to educate the general public. And one of the things we have to do better as a society is to be talking about stigma and talking about how big of an impact that has on people avoiding talking about the stuff they need to talk about and work on. And I think the better, the more normal that becomes, the better we do a, a job of, of making sure people understand how big of an impact their words that they choose to use have on people that are within earshot, the better off we're gonna have folks getting help when they get.
And to your point, I think one of the things that we don't do in America that you actually do see back in history, throughout history, that cultures do, is there was a welcoming home of the veteran. There was a process to bring them back. I mean, even as, you know, as of World War II, they actually went through a reverse bootcamp, so to speak, so that they would actually transition out of the war and be able to go into the civilian sector. To your point, that's where I think a, a lot is lost, especially for our guard and reserve, men and women in uniform who go overseas and then they come right back. And I understand the tenet behind it, you've been gone for a year, we're gonna give you three months off, right when you get back, but the truth of the matter is, a lot of those men and women are coming back and, and they have no resource, they have no support, and it's going from hot to cold very, very quickly. There's no long boat back. So I would a hundred percent agree with you that, you know, we like to have, a lot of times veterans have a dark sense of humor, we like to joke, we like to rib, but the reality is there are individuals out there that, that need to be able to get treatment or be able to be seen that don't do it because they are afraid of how they are going to look and what's going on. That actually kind of leads me to my next question. Listen, let's, let's step back from the lens of saying that we're talking directly to the veteran right now. Even though veterans could be listening, you could still apply some of the stuff that we're gonna talk about, but someone finally opens up to you, right? And the, I've always likened this to substance abuse or drug addiction, meaning that if somebody came into you, came to you and said, listen, I have a, I have a problem with heroin, I need to get help, you don't look at your cloud and go, okay, you know what, if you come back two Wednesdays from now, I'm gonna fix you right in, player, don't worry about it. You know, you get them in the car and you take them directly to some form of help. What should civilians that might watch this, that has a loved one, they, they know is in turmoil, they know they're struggling, how should they approach that? And, and if someone approaches them and tells them that they're struggling, what should their next steps be?
I'm probably a little biased, but I say, come to me.
Okay, collect them all.
Yeah, so, you know, very much, it, you know, if somebody has told you that they're struggling, you get them to a crisis program. I, unless somebody says, you know, I am going to kill myself right this moment, don't take them to the hospital, you're going to spend five hours there to be told to do something outpatient. You know, bring them to a crisis program, bring them to the walk-in center, call the suicide prevention lifeline, call two-on-one, call these crisis resources that are here in the community that, that can get you to those connections quickly and not just, you know, spend five to 10 minutes with you and then say, okay, well, we're not appropriate for you, so go somewhere else. You know, you, you need somebody to, to do a little bit more than that, because I agree with you, very much like substance abuse. You know, you have a short window when somebody is asking for help and, and you need to act on it right when they do that. I think, you know, the other part that you said is if you think somebody is struggling, you're not really sure, you just ask them. I, I think a lot of us tend to, to not want to make somebody feel worse or to not rock the boat. You're not going to make somebody worse, you know? If they're struggling already, having that frank conversation with you, you know, with them, hey, man, you look like you're struggling, what can I do to help? That sentence right there could be the door that they've been waiting for somebody to swing open. So, so take that moment and actually, you know, reach out.
Now, one of the things that I did wanna touch base on, what you said was, you know, we went through this, we went through mental first aid, right? Is that you have to be willing to ask that question, like especially if you think they're suicidal. You have to ask very frankly, are you suicidal? Are you thinking about hurting yourself? Because as you said, a lot of people are worried, like all of a, well, you weren't thinking about suicide, now I brought it up, now you're thinking about suicide. That, that's not how it works, you're not gonna trip on that side of it. And then to that point, if they say they are, then you do the follow-on question, have you made a plan? If that's the case, would you say safely, that's the person we take to the ER? And if the answer is no, or they haven't made a plan, that that's somebody to bring more to a crisis center? Just I wanna get a clear differentiator.
Yeah, there's a difference between having thoughts and, and then having a plan or, or having the, the want to carry out those thoughts. You know, it's all serious, it all needs to be addressed. If somebody is, is having a plan, if somebody wants to die, you need to get them to the highest level of care possible. Take them to the emergency room where they can, you know, be seen immediately, go inpatient if they need to. If somebody's having thoughts, but it hasn't got, you know, that bad, luckily hasn't got that bad yet, the crisis service is exactly what you need, you know? No matter who comes in here, we do a full safety assessment with them and every single person walks out of here with a full safety plan that's very much talks about all of those things. When I start having these thoughts, how do I stop myself? Who can I reach out to? How do I get help? You know, sometimes you just have a bad day and have bad thoughts. It's important, we wanna discuss it, but we don't wanna lock you away because of that. That's why we're here, you know? We're here to assess the difference and to really just give you the tools that you need so that you can stay home safely.
Can we actually talk about that for a second? And I would love to hear from anyone else as well. One of the biggest fears that not just veterans, but honestly, anybody has, is they have, I mean, everyone has seen the story on the news where the police raid the veteran's house, they were locked up and then they arrest them and they take them away. I think so many people are afraid that if they come out and say, hey, listen, I have a, I have an issue and, you know, I will, I'll, I'll paint with the wide brush here, obviously this doesn't apply to everybody, but, you know, a lot of veterans are obviously are, are big two-A supporters, they have their own firearms. And then they're concerned that if they say that I'm, I'm struggling or having issues that boom, all of a sudden, everybody's gonna come in, confiscate, take everything away from them. Can any of you guys speak to that or what you would say to somebody that had that type of concern?
For the most part, it, it's not true. I think, you know, our safety plans here, we would say, who could get those guns out of your home for a few days while we make sure that you're safe? And again, that's, that's just to limit access. While the state, you know, there, there's the red flag laws and things like that where, you know, people can petition for that. Here in Frederick County at least, it's extremely rare that anyone has filed for red, filed the ERPOs for that to happen. The ones that have, I think only one, the last I heard before COVID, only one has gone where they actually were confiscated for the full year. The, the, the weapon piece isn't something, I think, to be very concerned about. Getting yourself locked up or, or, you know, they're gonna stick me on the psych ward, I'm never gonna be able to get out. That also is extremely rare that there's, you know, what we call the involuntary commitments. Frankly, no one wants to do that. If there is a, if there's a way to keep you in your house safely, that's what everyone wants to do and we're gonna bend over backwards to make that happen for you.
We talk about, yes?
Just real quick, I just wanted to add on to kind of what Travis was saying previously about talking to friends, friends and family. You know, I, I would say something very similar to when we're talking about friends and family members of, of someone who, you know, we suspect has some substance issues. Don't be afraid of having the conversation. Be very frank, be very honest, talk about how it's impacting you and have the conversation frequently and trust your gut. You know, nine times out of 10, I'll talk to a parent and they're like, ah, something's going on, I just don't, you know, something's not right. But, but, you know, when I ask about it, they say, you know, X, Y, and Z to explain it away. And I just say, stick with your gut. If, if you know that something's wrong, something is probably wrong. Just have the conversation frequently and in, in a caring way. And, and that is, that is the, the way that we're gonna get people to address issues before they reach a crisis level. And that's, that's what we've got to work on as a community, is getting people assessed for, for treatment options prior to crisis.
When we talk about, we, everybody goes like back to Maslow's needs, right? You need shelter, you need security, you gotta eat, right? Food security is an issue as well for many veteran families. What does Network of Care offer in terms of food service for veterans who are in need during this time? And do they also offer anything like shelter, clothing? What can they do for that?
Well, in terms of housing resources, I think in your county, we have over a hundred different providers for various type of housing assistance, financial aid, shelters, transitional housing, subsidized housing and things like that. In terms of food, I haven't looked recently, but while I'm looking at that, I could, I wanted to share with you guys that there is a program within Network of Care that is called Wellness Recovery Action Plan. It is authored by Mary Ellen Copeland, who is an advocate, and it is designed to help the veteran organize ahead of time before the mental health episode as to what would happen. Identify their triggers, identify medication that they don't wanna be given, identify trusted people that they can reach out to during that time. There's also a way to securely share parts of that plan with different people. So I might share my crisis plan with my wife and my brother and say, if that happens, this is what I wanna see happening. I might share my trigger with just my wife because then she would know what my triggers are and she can actually help me figure out that, oh, this is not gonna be good for you. Or maybe you're just gonna have an episode, or maybe we should go seek services. But that's a really, really good program, it's been around for decades. It's basically, for the most part, the online version, and our online version is absolutely- It's basically, for the most part, the online version, and our online version is absolutely free. But even if you want to go take the workshop with Mary Ellen directly, she doesn't charge anybody that doesn't have money, she's a true, true and true advocate. So that's one resource that's available. Now, in terms of food and resources for. Food, I'm gonna have to look into this for your site. I think there is approximately. Hmm, that's interesting. We have about eight or nine resources in your area from the pantries to food stamps to. Financial assistance for meals. In your, in your county, in our, in our network of care site.
Awesome. And also then I know that NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. They do involve the family members and caretakers of veterans, they offer resources as well. You can actually check into the chat feature, see the information that comes from there. Now, as we start to get close towards the end of the hour, amazing how fast time flies when you're having fun. I, a question that I do have for you guys, listen, I'm gonna ask the elephant in the room, right? Everybody is worried about funding. From your own personal paycheck to the businesses that are trying to stay open. How do you, at your respective organization, how do you feel funding is, do you feel there's any concerns there with funding to be able to achieve your mission? Where do you guys see the future for you at? Travis?
The walk in service is a hundred percent grant funded from local and state grants. And donations, as of right now, the state is saying that things should continue for next year, so. We're optimistic that that is true and that we're gonna continue to be able to offer our service for free and and hopefully even expand it. Further and just while I'm the one talking real quick, one thing I didn't mention before that I want to mention. A lot of people are struggling right now because they have lost connection to providers. They're not able to get psychiatric medications because their psychiatrist has either stopped seeing them, they don't, can't do the virtual visits or something like that. The walk in service does have an interim prescriber. That for people who are struggling with those like refills or something, they can come here and meet with our. Nurse practitioner until they can get reconnected, so I just wanted to say that real quick.
Carrie, how do you guys feel over at the Maryland State Department of Veteran Affairs?
Oh, well, we're, I mean, obviously we're on the the hiring freeze and then the budgets, the spending budget is frozen for the state. But everything they keep telling us is good to go, we're gonna still continue to be staffed. We have a couple of big moves coming up, including our Frederick office. Very excited. And then.
It'll be like right high five distances.
So that's awesome and a lot to look forward to, our Hagerstown office is moving shortly into the MVA. We had a couple more offices that moved in that are merging with MVAs too. So a lot of big changes in in the positive and and I think we're all still gonna be here still, still helping and and we're bringing in revenue for the state. I mean, every veteran that's getting more money from the VA is gonna be turning around, putting that back into to our economy in some way, shape or form, so it's a, it's a win win really.
Shane, how about you?
Yeah, we have. Because the the state worked with us initially to develop the first Network of Care site for the state of Maryland. The two estate that helped us develop it, California and Maryland, and so as such, we do not charge the state anything for our veteran site. So your veteran side for the state of Maryland will not have, there would be no impact for you guys, it's, there's no funding required for it, it's free.
Awesome, I love, I love no funding, that's like my, one of my favorite things to hear. How about you, Melissa, how are you guys looking?
Um, we're, we're feeling confident with our funding, of course, right now, we're even expanding, we have a new partnership. Eyes are permanent, so our network is only going to be more robust and grow and. We're making new connections out in the community and doing a lot of our to our normal work, so. I feel we're really confident right now that we're not gonna have any sort of changes anytime soon within our funding, so we're, we're good. I also wanted to say one thing, I think what's really good too, we mentioned before. Getting someone services with the one stop shop thing with the serving together and being the. Call they need to make and connecting to the peer navigator. A lot of times we're able to find and identify behavioral health needs while they're seeking other services. So like they're looking into getting or income support or assistance with your, their utilities. Really good about talking to them about everything and we do, we do inquire about how things are going and is this an opportunity maybe provide some more support? So I think we really all need to be addressing behavioral health and mental health with everything we're doing, not even if we're just a behavioral provider. Even when you're helping someone with housing, because like you said, the Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Someone's coming to you for housing, or not necessarily know that they need to come to you for behavioral health, they're just worried about the fact that they're sleeping on the street. So we try to take that opportunity to to be the one stop shopping, looking for employment, housing, behavioral health, whatever we can do at that time, so. I think it's important to think about that with every, every interaction you have.
And Jay will let you wrap it up.
Well, hey, save the best for last. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna talk about how the the health department has impacted financially about this instead. I'm gonna end this on a, on a note of hope, how about that? So the health department, it's getting pretty deep in here and then. The health department applied for through the Fed and was was granted a sum of money earmarked for supporting. The behavioral health system of care in Frederick County specifically. So the the good piece there is that we're gonna be able to, through an RFP process, go out and hopefully financially support. Some of those behavioral health providers who experienced law, you know, financial loss through this whole thing and to incentivize some, some innovative programs. To support our community as we go into this recovery phase of COVID, so I I'm very excited about that. I think that's really good news that, you know, the Fed and the state and the health department have all invested. Put their money where their mouth is, that that we have to make this a priority to support folks in this regard.
Awesome. Well, guys, I can't thank you enough for taking time out of a Monday when I got it done, got after it, I mean, we didn't have a case of the Mondays today, everybody was fired up and able to do it. From me to each of you, thank you very much for what you do for our veterans, thank you for the time and effort that goes into it. I know a lot of times it's not a lot of light work, but it's important work. I do believe there's a social contract that we owe the men and women that went overseas to take care of them when they come home. And you guys don't just talk, you talk, you walk the walk, and we appreciate that. Guys, if you're interested in finding out any more information about them, make sure you check the chat feature. You can also make sure you follow for tune twenty two so that you can be kept up to date of everything that we're doing. To bring the Veteran Services Center right here to Frederick, Maryland. Again, I hope you have a phenomenal night, until next time, guys, thank you much.